Well, at least we know. So. Okay, thank you. So, time being six o'clock, I will call the Joint County and Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Oh, Sherry Hoffman, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Here, here, here.
She's here.
Here, here, here. Doug? Dennis? Christie? Kathy? Chris? No, Sherry.
Here. There is a quorum of both the planning and the county commissions, so we can proceed. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do not.
I do not.
No.
No. Any planning commissioners? Okay, thank you. Item number four is approval of the agenda, and we are only looking at the agenda for the joint meeting.
Our temporary veteran service officer is in attendance. If we could add that right away at the beginning, so he could introduce himself and then be on his way, we can do that.
So, you want to...
Just introduce veteran service officer, maybe 3A or 4A or B.
All right. I have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Amended agenda is approved. So, we are now at public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment at this time? There being none, we'll close public comment. Move on to item 4A.
Yep.
Yep, please, and the microphone's on already, so you should be good.
All right, thank you. I'm Cody Mangold. You graciously voted me in as the temporary veteran service officer. Just want to come introduce myself, tell you thank you, introduce myself to the community. I've been in the job for a week, and it's pretty busy. It's amazing what happens from minute to minute, and you're on the phone, next thing you know, somebody else is calling, and you got to call them back. And it's been pretty busy, but thank you for the opportunity, I really appreciate it, and hope to continue. Thank you.
You had a good interview on one of the news channels the other night, I can't remember which one carried it.
Oh, Kellaland.
Yeah, Kellaland. So, it was good, it was like, ah, he's an employee.
Yep, and more, I've also been working on getting ahold of other organizations in town and starting outreach with them. And we're starting to get a partnership with other organizations again, so hopefully we can continue to get more going.
Good. Thanks for dropping by.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Cody.
And we are five minutes ahead of schedule, we should wait till 6:10. So... We've got five minutes. And there's nothing to move up, because this is the only thing on the agenda for this.
Had a very nice ceremony at the county center veteran memorial yesterday. So, thank you guys for allowing the use of that, it was well attended.
Good to hear.
Yep. That didn't take up five minutes, though.
It was nice weather, I hate to tell you, I was praying for rain, but it was nice weather for it. I think we were all praying for rain. Not much to be had. Jim?
Thank you. Something I didn't get. We're waiting till 6:10.
Jim, how you doing? Keeping up with the weeds so far? How's the, that one place that we visited, are they under control this year? Or do I, do I... Oh, okay. Okay. Am I going to have another trip with you this summer? I hope not, but... That was, that was bad.
Wasn't the end of the...
All right, my watch says 6:10. So, we will move on to item number five, which is the ordinance 21-ZN-04, a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local cannabis establishment permits and/or licenses. So, at this time, number one is a public hearing, and probably best just to open it up for public comments first. Would anyone care to make a public comment on a temporary ordinance for marijuana? Medical marijuana? There being none, the public comment portion of this is closed. The item number two is for a planning commission resolution recommending approval of ordinance 21ZN-04. So, this would just be regarding the planning commissioners that are present. Is there a motion to recommend approval? Do I have a motion by Barkle, do I have a second? Schultz has a second. Would you like to discuss this further? Okay, at this time, we'll do a roll call vote. For just the planning commissioners.
Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Don?
And Don.
Yes.
So, we have five yeses, unanimous recommendation to approve the resolution. So, that covers item number two on our agenda. Item five, sub-two. Number three in this item is first reading of ordinance 21ZN-04. So, this is the county commission's first reading of the temporary ordinance regarding medical marijuana. Should I take public comment on this again? It doesn't... I was going to say it doesn't list it here. I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, so if you want to make a public comment now, and you didn't before, come on up to the microphone. There being no interested parties, we'll close public comment on the first reading of the ordinance 21ZN-04. We will set the second reading date, and our plan is for June 15th, which is our next meeting. So, at this time, that closes out all of our agenda items for the joint meeting. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn the joint county commission, planning commission meeting.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Fox, second by Kettering, to adjourn our joint meeting. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Joint meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for coming and getting that done, and we'll move down the path a little further at our next meeting for that. So, at this time... If you'll flip over your sheets, I will call the county, the regular county commission meeting to order, time being 6:15. Roll call vote. Or roll call vote, just roll call, sorry.
Joe?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Don?
Yes.
Wanda?
Here.
Sherry?
Here. And we have a quorum, we'll move on to item number three. Does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
None.
No. There being no conflicts, we'll move to item number four, which is approval of the agenda.
The only, go ahead. The only thing I'd say is, could we do the Platts before Board of Adjustment, then instead of having two separate Board of Adjustments, just have one? I think that would make more sense.
Dan? Sorry. Bill? Wasn't that was just advertised at that time? That's why the Platts are before that?
Yeah. One of the Platts has to be approved before the last CUP, and so we, that's how we set the times up, so.
Okay. No, I understand, but we go to Board of Adjustment, regular session, then go back to Board of Adjustment. If we did the Platts first, that might make more sense, but...
What about the people who are scheduled to come at 6:30, 6:45? And not at...
Well, yeah, there's a 10-minute...
At 6:50.
There... If we want to proceed this way, I'm fine, but generally, we have a Board of Adjustment session, and then we move on. And in this circumstance, we go into Board of, a regular session, Board of Adjustment, back into regular session, then back into Board of Adjustment again, and then back into regular session. And we could eliminate that by moving the Platts ahead, doing them first, and then just having one Board of Adjustment session.
That may be true, but we've already spent more time than we should to do that.
Okay.
So, there was one other suggestion, Joe, do you want to go ahead?
Bring it up. We've got two employees here, I was going to suggest moving the item 12 and 13 to item 4A and 4B. To get them on their way.
Is that a motion?
It's just to amend the agenda, so a motion would be to approve the amended agenda, if you want to make a motion.
So, I'd move to approve agenda with those changes.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the amended agenda, with the amendment being number 12 and 13 are moved to 4A and 4B. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. Amended agenda is approved. At this time, would anyone care to make a public comment? There being none, public comment is closed. And we are at 4A, which is Mr. Solatchek.
This first is the Agribusiness Grant work agreement between the county and the state. This is for Eastside Drive. Milling it, adding eight inches of gravel, and putting two 4-inch or two 2-inch asphalt mats for a total of four inches. Do you guys have any questions on the agreement?
I did not, just for update, I did contact Growmark today, just to see where they were at on the project, if anyone cares. They're... They have a crew mobilizing this week to begin dirt work. I think they've got all their permits in place, and they're going to begin construction in July, with the hopes to finish in January of '22. So... It is moving forward.
That still meets your plan, too? Their plan and your plan? Pretty good.
We'll make it work.
All right. Any other questions on the agreement that was provided?
I'd move approval of the Agribusiness Grant agreement between South Dakota Department of Transportation and Yankton County.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the Agribusiness Grant for Eastside Drive with the state. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0.
Second, or next is entrance application for Growmark. It'd be just north of the existing entrance that they do have. Be 100-foot wide entrance with a 18-inch culvert. You guys have any more questions on that?
Move approval.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the entrance application for Growmark. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0.
You know, I don't know what their current...
There you go, thank you.
They're expanding, so...
All right, that closes out all of Mr. Solatchek. So, come on up. Mr. Leach.
What's going, Jim?
It's that time of year again, I'm looking for an autograph on mosquito abatement contracts and approval.
Need rain for mosquitoes, Jim.
What's that?
You need rain for mosquitoes.
Yeah, I don't want to say anything.
These are the same contracts essentially as last year.
Exactly the same.
I'd move approval of the mosquito abatement contracts.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve all of the mosquito abatement contracts with the cities and the county. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. You're good to go, sir.
Thank you. I'll pick them up.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, so item 4A and 4B are concluded, we are now at item five. We'll start with the minutes from May 18.
My only thing I saw was, I thought we were supposed to have a reason if we're abstaining for a non-financial conflict of interest. I think that's our policy, I guess I don't see one in there, maybe I missed it, but...
I don't recall that in the past, but we can certainly have one added.
Non-financial interests must state reason for abstaining, it's the line a couple above it, so...
I understand that, I just made a comment, I don't think we've done in the past, where at are you?
I think it's in the third paragraph from the top.
Yeah. I mean, if we're not, yeah, exactly, if we're not, if we want to get rid of that, that's fine, but that's been in there for a while, so...
Okay. Because I abstained at the Drainage Commission meeting, because it was felt I was too involved in the project. So, can we add that, and would that suffice? And that I abstained at Drainage Commission as well. So, I was consistent. Any other amendments to the May 18th meeting? I would entertain a motion to approve the amended minutes.
I would move to approve the amended minutes.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to approve the amended minutes. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. Claims?
I'd move approval of claims.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the claims as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. May payroll.
I should have mentioned something, apologize, but in this one, we're paying the Yankton Area Chamber of Commerce. That organization's not going to exist in a month. Is there a way we could re-vote on that, or maybe, maybe it doesn't matter, but it's several hundred dollars of taxpayer money. I don't know where that's going to go, because from what I understand, the Chamber of Commerce is beginning to come, combined with YAPG, and become Yankton Thrive. Maybe it would be better if we just waited until that organization stood up, rather than paying our chamber dues, and then it's going to not exist in less than a month.
So, Don, I would assume there is a plan of transition for all of the membership accounts into Yankton Thrive?
I believe they hope that that will occur.
It is, they are in the claims.
Yeah.
I would say at this point, we've approved them, and if something changes where that's not applied forward, we would ask for a rebate. Because we've already made a motion and approved it.
I guess we can...
We haven't received any that they've changed the name.
So, we have May payroll in front of us.
Move approval.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the May payroll. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. Patty, do you want to talk about the poll book?
Yes, our current poll books. We originally had them at the election, I think it was 2012. 2012. And then we received an update of all the poll books that I used at the vote centers. We have that change in 2014. And when we were at the workshop last month, Dustin was there, and I do have one on the counter, and some of you have looked at them. And when the city had their election, I had the poll workers come and look at them. They're much easier. And there's no hardly any cords, just two plugins. And it's just an update. So, what we have, they're... The one that I have for testing is an Air 2, but we will get the Air 8s.
So, you currently have something similar, you're just looking to a new?
Yes.
iPad or whatever?
And it's a lease agreement for five years. And by then, by the end of the five years, there'll be probably an update on them, so we can just renew the the lease agreement. And then for support for both next year's primary and general, Dustin Van Valen, he's like a salesman for No Week. And he'll be support for both elections, and that'll be $10,000. But we also get reimbursed for that $10,000 from the Hava grants from the state.
Patty showed me this system, and it looks great. We haven't had any problems with our elections, and I think a lot of it is due to the auditor's office keeping on top of this stuff. And elections are one of the most important things we do. And I guess I support upgrading the equipment.
That $10,000 is separate from this quote.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the quote for the poll books.
And I think the motion should also be with support.
With support included.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the quote that's presented to us for hardware and support. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
And the last item for number five, Department of Health Subrecipient Agreement. So, this agreement was actually sent to me via email for DocuSign, and it has to do with the WIC program. Any questions? It looks like a little more than we did last time.
I'd move approval of the Department of Health Subrecipient Agreement.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the State of South Dakota Department of Health, Division of Family and Community Health Subrecipient Agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. We are done with item number five, and we are right at 6:30. So, I would entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Kettering, second by Healy to sit as Board of Adjustment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, we are meeting as Board of Adjustment. Item number six, Marty Steinberg Conditional Use Permit. Come on up to the microphone and explain what you're asking to do.
I'd like to put up a building behind my house out west of town. We have a large RV I'd like to put inside there. I also have car hobbies, use it for storage, things like that.
Any questions for the applicant? It looks like it's four thousand three hundred and twenty square feet and sixteen foot sidewalls.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Personal use.
Yes.
Got it? Alright, sir, you sit down, and I'm going to ask for public comment. So this time, anyone in the audience care to make a public comment? There are no comments, so we will close public comment. Bring it back to the Commission for Discussion.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Fox to approve the conditional use permit. And I do think we need to walk through some of the requirements of the Board of Adjustment. So if we look down page five of the packet, begins the findings of fact from the Planning Commission. It states what he is asking for. There was notice of public hearings given, they attended the public hearing. They did recommend to approve it, and I think it was a unanimous vote, right? Remember in the minutes. Ingress and egress, they found to be acceptable. Off-rampway parking was not required because it's not a public use. Refuge and service areas were present, utilities are present, as it's an established homestead. They did not require any screening or buffering. No signs are planned. Exterior lighting exists, and the required yard exists. So you meet all the setbacks required in your zone. And it's generally compatible and will not adversely affect public interest. Because this is larger than technically allowed. Any other comments the Commissioners want to make before I call for a vote? Roll call vote?
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Conditional use permit is approved. You are good to go, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're about a minute ahead of six thirty-five, so we'll take a little pause here. Make sure we stay on schedule. Did you get the motion for the entrance exam?
Oh, no, I didn't.
It was Clemish and Kettering. And it was five zero. And Don? Five zero. Alright, time's six thirty-five. We will move on to item number seven, which is a variance for Dean Gustad. Come on up, sir. Welcome.
Dean Gustad, if you don't know me, live out by Volin, rural Volin. Planning on putting up a hay shed across the road from my place on a forty acre field that me and my brother own. I did give Bill some photographs of what I'm dealing with out there. I'm applying to build it closer than what the setbacks allow me. I've got an existing shelter belt across the road, which is where I live. And I've got a hill that is making me hug the road more, so I don't have to haul in ten foot of fill. I don't know, Bill, do you got those?
There's the back end, yep, we got them.
Are they these ones again? Are they different?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
That's the site, and I did include some pictures. We already have an existing hay shed down where we grew up, and that's what it's going to look like. And when my dad built this, he had to apply for a variance also. And it's basically going to be the same variance, same building.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, go ahead and sit down, sir. At this time, would anyone care to make a public comment on this application? Come on up. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Lyle Stratman, and I live on three oh third Street, four four eight six, right against Dean. And my land runs right against Dean, and I have no objections of him building that building along that road over there. Like he said, his dad built the same one, so I just want to state that. So I'm the next door neighbor, so I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another hand, come on up.
My name is Dean Mormon, and I live on the other side of Dean Gustad on four four seven four two three hundred and second street. And I see no problem with them putting up a building. The Gustads, they've been around for a long time. They've got young boys, they're going to be around a long time to come. And if there's any problems with snow, if we get a nor'easter, they've got the manpower and the equipment. They'll take care of it, they'll mow it. They're, they're good people and they're good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alright, there being no more comments, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for further discussion.
You know, I know the Gustad family, they're good, good people, and I don't see any issue with this. And I guess I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering to approve the variance application. Further discussion?
You know, and further discussion, I know we've gone back and forth on variances. And this is just an example where a variance makes sense. Doesn't make sense to have these guys haul in ten foot of filled dirt and quadruple or more the cost of this project. It's a good project, and I hope it passes.
I may be a broken record. I have no issue personally with somebody in the variance. I, I would like to see when we make these motions and, and say, you know what? We don't care if it's moved closer to tie it. Give, give a reason. It helps justify these decisions, other than it's a good, you know, these are good people.
Because if he has to go to seventy-five feet, he's going to have to put in a significant amount of filled dirt. The neighbors are in support of it.
And how does that relate to the ordinance, I guess, is what I'm after.
My motion stands, Joe, if you want to vote against it, go ahead.
I, I believe.
Justification, Dan, you asked me for specifics on why I vote a certain way, that's all I'm asking.
I believe that the findings of fact that came out of the Planning Commission meeting reflect that absent a variance, that the topography of the ground does not allow construction further east, which would then in turn mean that if he were to build this structure further east, then he would have to haul in a substantial amount of filter. This is clearly not something that he created. It's just the luck of the draw with the land that he bought.
So let's walk through those findings of fact. So this section number one, the strict application of the ordinance would produce undue hardship. Applicant is requesting a variance, adding. That doesn't really. So their, their answer was applicant is requesting a variance to setbacks in an ag district, adding an AG accessory building that would be fifty foot from the west property line, a variance of twenty feet.
Which doesn't answer that question.
Correct.
It would produce an undue harm. Monetarily, I believe that it would, but it doesn't say that in the finding, number one.
So and then it says such hardship is not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district. Topography doesn't allow construction further east. Do other properties in that same zoning district have the same challenge with uneven ground? Item C, the authorization of such variance will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property, and the character of the district will not be a substantial detriment on property. The granting of the variance is based upon reasons of demonstrable and exceptional hardship as distinguished from variations for purposes of convenience, profit, and caprice. It says no convenience, profit, or caprice. Item number two, the variance shall be recommended for approval, so the applicant is requesting it. Structure fifty feet from the west lot line. Planning Commission finds the condition or situation of the property concerning, or the intended use of the property concerned, or the intended use of the property is not of so general or recurring a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment of this ordinance. So that really wasn't answered. Number three, a written application for a variance is submitted, demonstrating special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and which are not applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. And to the right, they said topography restricts where building can be erected. Literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. And D, the granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. E, no non-conforming use of neighboring land structures or buildings in the same district, and no permitted or non-conforming use of land structures or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for issuing the variance. They were not considered. The hearing notices were published, the dates are shown there, public hearing shall be held, which was done in May. And the Planning Commission finds the topography restricts where the building can be built. Planning Commission also acknowledges the proposed ordinance changes would result in no variance being necessary if passed. Planning Commission also finds that the use is in harmony with the surrounding area and will cause no detriment to the public. There were no special conditions attached. And the, the use itself is permissible in the district. So we went through their findings of fact, and we need to vote to either agree with them or disagree. Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
No. Motion passes four to one, you're good to go, sir. So, six forty-five. Item number eight is next on our agenda, it's scheduled for six forty, and we are five minutes behind, so we can go ahead. Is it Abel? Come on up, Mr. Abel. You're asking for a conditional use, walk us through your project, please.
Yes, I'm Mike Abel, and primary reason for the two-foot variance is, is we have a camper that we want to, want to put in. And we need a fourteen-foot door to get our camper in, so you know, we'd have to have another two-foot there in order to get your overhead door in, so that's, that's the primary reason for our two-foot.
Sir, and you, you're asking for a conditional use permit, and you said variance, they're two different things. But he's asking for a conditional use permit. We don't like variances in this board, so we've got to clear that up right away, so, alright.
And so you just want the walls two feet taller?
Yep.
Alright, any question?
Presumably the garage door two feet longer.
Any other questions for Mr. Abel? Alright, sir, go ahead and sit down. Would anyone in the audience care to make a public comment on this application? There being none public comment is closed, we'll bring it back to the Commissioners for further discussion. And findings of fact are listed there. All the public hearings, the notices were completed. They did recommend the conditional use permit, and I think this one was unanimous too, if I remember right. Ingress and egress exist, it's an established location. Off-rampway parking not required because it's private. Refuge and service areas, utilities are all available. No screening or buffering was required or asked for. There'll be no sign, excuse me, required yard exists, and it's generally compatible, will not adversely affect, affect public interest. So those were the findings of fact of the Planning Commission. Further comments? I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
I believe so.
I move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy to approve the conditional use permit for Mr. Abel. Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Don?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. You're approved. Happy building. Next item, number nine, Chad Donlin. Come on up, sir.
I have a pool that I'd like to put up, and the regulations say thirty inches, anything over that, we've got to get approval. And this one will be fifty-two inches tall. It's a temporary pool, or seasonal pool, it'll be used only in the summer, be taken down in the winter. We have a ladder to get in that we plan on locking up into a locked shed, and it will have a cover on it when in not use.
Any other questions for Mr. Donlin?
This is a temporary pool?
Well, seasonal, just in the summer. It will be brought down in the winter.
A question for you, Bill, if you can answer it. Do we do conditional use permits for temporary pools? I don't.
Just the swing pool, from the definition, swing pool has no differentiation between temporary and permanent?
I think in the past, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, most of the pools that we did were all permanent structures. I don't ever remember a temporary one, do you?
I'm not, I'm not sure temporary is, is the right terminology. This is a sited pool typical that you see in yards all over the place. Metal sides, and you have a deck on one corner or one side of it, or a stair step up in.
There, there's a ladder, a plastic ladder that goes up and over, there's no deck around the area, and the only.
But it's a metal, metal sidewalls.
No, the only metal that is there are the braces that you have to angle out.
Good. When you're done, when you're done, does it all fold up and put in the shed and there's nothing there? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think our definition needs to work, but I know there was a slew of ordinance enforcement letters that went out a few years ago. I think Louis Newt, there were some out in the country that went out that were the same kind of pools.
I, I don't, I don't believe. I don't, I don't believe that was the case. They were all permanent, year-round structured pools from what he's explained.
Got one and it was the same kind of pools. I don't think we need them, but according to this, I think the definition doesn't distinguish. I'd just say move forward. I'd move approval of, we got to do public comment.
Yes. Yep. Any other questions right now? Go ahead and sit down, sir. Anyone care to make a public comment on the pool application? There being no public comments, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. It does look like there was one person at the planning commission who voted against it. Don, do you remember why?
I think they were concerned about offense.
Yeah, there was one dissent vote and they wanted a fence around it.
Got you. Okay. So back up here to their findings of fact. There we go.
I'm very concerned about the precedence that this would set. I mean, I've served on the planning commission for almost five years and I don't ever recall giving a conditional use permit for a temporary pool. It was always a permanent pool, a permanent structure. This is not that. I really think we need to do some more research before we move on with this and we should see if we've ever done anything like this before. I, I don't know. I understand your point of view. You want to, you want to do the right thing, but I don't believe our ordinance ever intended us to have a conditional use permit for something temporary like that.
I'm, well, I'm guessing if you read the definition of the swimming pool, I'm thinking that's what he's referring to. It says a water-filled enclosure permanently constructed or portable having a depth of more than 24 inches. So his point is, his pool is bigger than the 24 inches. It does reference portable in the ordinance. So I'm guessing that's why he's here. Because when you read the definition, the pool's too high.
And I think this is where we as a board need to use our noggins up here because under that definition, everybody who has a hot tub probably going to have to get a conditional use permit, too. And then we certainly don't want to go down this road. If it was a permanently constructed pool, like every other one that's come in front of us, that we required fences on and gates and all, I would, I would support it. But I think this is a different situation.
So are you saying that because, excuse me, because it's a above-ground temporary seasonal pool that you do not want to approve it?
I don't think he needs a conditional use permit for that.
But if he's applied for it, what is the harm of granting it?
Well, I'm worried about the precedents that we, that are set because several years ago, before I was elected, there was zoning enforcement, like Joe said, on a similar type situation. And are we going to make everybody who puts up a temporary pool? Or if I put up an inflatable pool out of the country?
Taller than 24 inches.
Which they make and you don't have a conditional use permit. Are we going to do zoning enforcement on that?
It's an above-ground pool having a depth of more than 30 inches.
Move approval of Mr. Donlin's conditional use permit.
Second. So I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the conditional use permit application. And I'm just going to scan through these findings of fact real quick. No off-right-of-way parking, refuse and services there, utilities present. No screening or buffering was required. No signs, yards are there. They did not require any additional fencing and generally compatible with the general area. So I think that when we come to issues like these, it is our job as commissioners to follow the ordinance. And if we don't like it, we need to change it. So if we're looking at trying to exempt these type of pools, the best step would be to amend the ordinance to take the word out and to focus it on what it really does or to completely take swimming pools out to begin with. I've got a 10-foot deep dugout at home that doesn't have a fence around it and I could call it a swimming pool technically.
Agreed to remove it about 10 times on planning, zoning, and commission level would just do it.
So, but since it is in our ordinance, we are bound to follow what it says. Further discussion before I call for a roll call vote, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Approved, five zero. You're, you're good to go, sir. Thank you. So at this time, entertain a motion to go to regular session.
I would.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to sit as regular session. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We are now at item number 10. Go ahead and start.
All right, first one is plat of lot one, whitetail run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 16, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval of the plat. Second.
So a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the plat for lot one and whitetail run. And it was one, two, three, four, five. It was approved six, zero at the planning commission. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Plat of lot 11, whitetail run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 16, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
So at the planning.
I'm sorry?
So at the planning commission, there was one planning commissioner who voted against that. Was there a reason?
No, I think that must be an error.
Okay.
There was only, all these were.
I thought it was kind of odd. I thought it was kind of odd that we had one. Okay, go ahead.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve lot 11 of whitetail run. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Lot 15.
Plat of lot 15, whitetail run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 16, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Healy. Do I have a second?
Kettering.
Kettering seconds to approve lot 15. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Plat of lot two, whitetail run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 16, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve lot two of whitetail run. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Are all those lots platted out now in that area, Bill?
No, I think there is still one little section that is left. We have two that are going to be combined.
Lots of development happening there.
Are you good? Go ahead.
Okay. A replat of lot K-2 and the east 158 feet of parcel two of lot K-1 in the north half of the northeast quarter of section 15, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as lots one and two, Metz-Petersen addition in the north half of the northeast quarter of section 15, T-93N, R-56W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve lots one and two, Metz-Petersen addition. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And last one.
A replat of tract one, Myers addition in the north half of the southeast quarter of section 26, T-93N, R-54W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as tract two, Myers addition in the north half of the southeast quarter of section 26, T-93N, R-54W of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve tract two, Myers addition. Further discussion, all in favor.
Bill, do you know why they're plating it like that? Like right through the middle of the.
Yes.
I just have a.
10 through 17? I can get to it. Basically, they want to move a mobile home in and there wasn't enough room with the setback. And so relative owns the next lot over and so they, here you go. So they basically cut this little notch out here so they would have enough setback.
So because of what the county's doing, people are circumventing the system and plotting like this and get it, get it around. And you know, this is one of the consequences of what we're doing with denying variances and lot size. Well, what I'm saying, though, is people find a way to do it.
So change it.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying this is a consequence and where there's a will, there's a way.
Do I have a motion on the table? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We are concluded with item number 10. And so item number 11, entertain a motion to go back into Board of Adjustment.
I'd move to go back into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to sit as Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are at item number 11 and we are just a little behind schedule, so we're good to go. Matt Evans, are you speaking? Come on up, Mr. Denherter.
He's got visuals.
Mr. Evans is getting better.
I have to be able to see it.
Comes with visual aid. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Attorney Ross Denherter. I've been hired by Mr. Evans on behalf of Reichen RV Park, Inc. What you see in front of you is a depiction, a rendering of what this particular campground will appear like when the development is complete. You will see that this, this particular campground appears practically like an extension of the campground that this commission approved the CUP for a couple of months ago. Because it's a different parcel of property, it will appear as a separate CUP, but it will function like an extension of the existing campground. For purposes of complying with the ordinance, I'd just like to go through the criteria here real quick just to make sure the record is complete. Public hearing was properly noticed before the Board, Planning and Zoning Board, as well as before this particular meeting. All of the conditions that are required under the ordinance do appear in the findings of fact, but I want to go through each one. If you look at this depiction, on the right-hand side, you see a roadway running north and south. That is the private roadway easement that appears on the property. That roadway is there. It has been constructed to county specs. It has been proved by the county highway superintendent. That will serve as a means of ingress and egress to this particular campground. On the western side, you also see, it's a little harder to see because we have perspective going into the distance there. It is also on the site plan that you see in your materials. Doe Avenue was also built based on an engineering design, a cross-section provided by the county's engineer through the county highway superintendent. That road was constructed to highway specifications, county highway specifications in accordance with ordinance. And it has been approved by the county highway superintendent. There was no room to spare, but it did fit and it is complete. That will also provide a means of ingress and egress to this particular campground. As you see on this particular drawing, there is fencing on the eastern and western boundaries that will provide screening in the areas where there's no roadway. So the only cuts in the fence will be where the roads enter into the private roadway easement and onto Doe Avenue.
I'm sorry, the fence is on what side?
There's also a fence on the northern boundary that he intends to construct as well. That will, that will divide the roadway from the right-of-way for Buck Street, which has also been completed. The ordinance requires that we address off-street right-of-way parking. You will see that each of these campsites does have room and will be provided a parking pad for each of the RV units. One of the things that Matt has decided to do a little differently moving forward, it's a little cleaner, a little more sanitary, rather than doing a centralized dumpster area. Mr. Evans is doing actual garbage pickup one day a week. So he does go around and collect the garbage. It's a little cleaner rather than having a dumpster area that catches flies and smells. All utilities that are necessary are adjacent to the property. You'll see those on the site plan on the western boundary of the property and they'll be extended into the park. In the past, there's been some questions about the septic system that has been engineered. You'll see that on the site plan. The septic systems have been designed in a way that address all of the complaints that were made about the other parks. So again, Mr. Evans is getting better at this as he goes and getting help from engineers. As far as dealing with signs, there's no signs proposed at this point. However, lighting is required that we address. It's not appearing on the findings of fact. It was addressed at the planning commission meeting. We intend to utilize minimum lighting for safety, but it will be downcast so as not to bother the campers in the park or the campers in the neighboring parks or the neighbors. There are no structures other than fences that intend to be constructed upon the property. So setbacks, yard spaces don't appear to be an issue here. And general compatibility with the neighborhood, it's consistent. There's campgrounds all over the place down here on two sides. And then there's likely going to be a campground adjacent on the other side of Buck Street to the north. So it is consistent with the neighborhood. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time?
So in this picture, I'm assuming the property line actually runs along this last row of, right? Okay, so this portion is the next campground showing here.
There is a site plan inside.
Campground, his other campground, number two.
The existing one that's just been constructed, correct? Yes.
We'll refer to it as number two.
Yes. But there is a site plan in the packet and that shows you the layout where the relative, the property lot lines relative to the roadways and campsites. Misspeak at all? Good?
The go with Wanda's campground two that's adjoining this, our fences. our fence is complete and operated. Is that campground operable today? And is it complete, I guess?
That campground is operable and complete. The fences have yet to be constructed on the east and west side. There's a reasonable period of time that he was given to complete those fences.
Part of the reason I ask... One thing that was discussed, I'm wondering if it ever came to fruition, was moving that west fence to the west side of... What is that, Doe? Doe.
Yeah, that was based upon an ability to communicate and cooperate with the neighbor, and that is not happening.
Okay. So that fence, that west fence on both of them are going to be, end up in the?
Yeah, on his property line.
Correct.
So could I ask? Who's going to take care of Buck Drive? I think that was in there. Could you explain that a little more?
You bet. Buck Street runs east and west. It's the northern boundary along the fence line. You see at the top of your photograph there. That is subject to a recorded road maintenance agreement with the developer. I have a copy of that, if you'd like to add it to the record today. We got it here in the file.
Yes, please.
This has been recorded.
Thank you. Is this your only copy?
I've got two.
Well, we can make some copies.
It has been recorded, but the copy you see before you was made pre-recording.
I'm sorry, what were you saying, Mr. Denherter?
Commissioner Fox, that particular road maintenance agreement that's coming down the line here has been recorded. However, the copy you see in front of you was made before it was delivered to the registered deed. So a recorded copy does exist, but I do not have it in my file.
Any other... Oh, go ahead.
Does that include Doe?
No. Doe is entirely the responsibility of Mr. Evans.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no other property owners that are utilizing it.
Right.
Other questions for the applicant?
Just one, and maybe I missed this. Is there going to be a fence between number two and number three?
No. It will function as an extension of number two. And those campers will also have access to the amenities, such as the pool, and I think there's maybe a playground.
So then, do the... Occupants of number three then have better refuse service than the occupants of number two? Or does number two get the weekly garbage pickup as well?
I don't know the answer to that question.
So, the reason for this is, a lot of these RV parks, I dealt with it for the last five years. Garbage pickup is very tough. You get tickets or fines from the health department for overflowing garbage, and it's seasonal. So one weekend, you have a half-empty garbage, and the next weekend, it's overflowing. Then you get two garbages, and then they're both half-full for the whole season, and then they're both overflowing. So we do, just as like a city garbage, we pick it up once a week. We've been doing it for the last month. No smelly garbage, no flies, no people dumping couches and stuff like that.
So the answer is yes. It will be two and three as well.
Correct. It'll be all the parks will have that. I just wanted to explain the reason, sorry.
That's okay.
So that, I may misunderstood. Does Doe Street run from Buck down to Alphonse Road?
It stops a little to the south of the northern boundary of Reichen RV Park. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Yankton RV Park. So it does not go all the way through. It's short by about 400 feet. So what it does is it provides a little bit of access to the northern, the northwestern exit of Yankton RV Park, so that Mr. Evans's maintenance equipment can access Doe to move up to the parks that lie to the north. But there's no public access. The goal is always keep traffic from those northern campgrounds off of Alphonse. So out the Doe Avenue has not been constructed all the way down to Alphonse.
But it is, is it legally designed to be all the way down to Alphonse?
It could, yeah. There, it's platted, I should say dedicated. The right-of-way exists all the way down to Alphonse, but there's been no construction of it.
You said that Mr. Evans would maintain Doe.
For the port?
Are you going to maintain that last 200 feet or 400 feet, or whatever it was?
Nothing's constructed. I mean, what's constructed, he'll maintain. It seems like it would be counterproductive to the issues in the neighborhood to build it the rest of the way. Would encourage more traffic to go in a chunk of area that's hotly fought over with the neighbor and...
Which is the road that is in dispute with the neighbor? Is that...
If you have a copy of the plat in front of you, which is...
Is it Doe or...
So Alphonse runs east and west. It's for... I mean, that Alphonse really has nothing to do with what we're dealing with here, because it's a couple campgrounds to the south, but...
Oriented myself, and then the one that goes north and south is...
That's Doe Avenue. It's...
And then the one that goes east and west on the other side of the property?
On the north is Buck Street, yes. So Buck and Alphonse run east and west. Doe runs north and south, but Doe was only constructed from Buck to through the Paramount campground that was recently constructed as a way to reduce traffic on Alphonse Road. That was, that was the general idea. So as of now, that's the portion that's been built. He's the only property owner that's utilizing it. If somebody else would want to develop or use it in a way, would probably try to engage in a road maintenance agreement like we've done with Buck, and like we've almost got put together for Alphonse Road, just to make sure that...
So everything between Alphonse Road and Buck, with Doe on the left side, is Mr. Evans's park?
Correct, that's right.
Whether it be one, two, or three?
Yes, well, one and potentially two very long one, or a second very long one.
Yeah.
Other questions for the applicant?
All right, so I just ask... Thank you. I just ask that if there are people who come up to speak against it, that we'd be offered a brief opportunity to rebut.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open it up for public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment on this application? Please state your name when you get to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Ryan Heiney from... And I live right next to the property on the Sixth Marine and Hop Farm. I would have been here, been in the planning commission to address the planning, this stuff in the planning commission, but I spent six hours that day in court defending myself against a baseless protection order from Mr. Evans, and I was exhausted. Right next is my family farm ground with row crops plus hops for commercial brewers. In the past, we also did host events, ag tourism types of things. But situation with the RV park and some conflicts with those operations and its owner have unfortunately made us decide to shut down hosting any outdoor events or activities. We officially closed our farm to the public late April. Mr. Better was notified of this fact in a letter from my attorney on April 30th. Anything we do on the property will be a necessary use for our farmhouse and residence and not a venue for public events. We understood certain items in the initial conditional use permit for Park One. Use permit for the RV park on Park One on Alphonse Road would be required, such as constructing the park to the layout set forth in the CUP application, installing proper fences and adequate building out of Alphonse Road. We attempted to work out an agreement on the road, and we're willing to continue to work on the matter if the future shows that it's worthwhile once again to invest in our property for public access. Doe Road was built by Mr. Evans at his second, by his second RV park and as well for the Park Extension tonight. And they do not leave adequate room for a full width right-of-way. It's a very narrow street. That far from hard surface to my property, that far is the ditch. That is, that's all the extra room. There's barely enough... We watch the traffic there every weekend. Barely enough room. It's more of a alleyway, not a public road. Fencing and privacy issues have not been adequately addressed in previous applications. We have no fencing along our border, as no screening whatsoever. And our attempt to discuss this, actually, Mr. Denherter brought this up in a meeting post one of our road agreement meetings, and he asked about sharing the cost of a fence along our border, as suggested by this commission. And Mr. Evans flatly said, "No." He sees no benefit to him. Therefore, he refused. That meeting was very interesting, which just was completely a waste of time and money on our part, because all we did is get yelled at. So one of the things is, there must be a lot of detail on this, on the CUP. One of the things that he expressed to us is that if it's not on black and white, he will not do it. He will not do it. Everything needs to be spelled out in black and white. Those were his words to us. So, the construction must be to plan and not to be allowed to vary without a hearing or any prior approvals. It cannot be just modified like the first park was completely changed from what was proposed to the commission. Obviously, parking should be controlled and not allowed on any of the ditches along Doe or the two-feet ditch of Doe or Buck Street. One of the big things, too, is we have 78 sites in this plan, along with, I can't remember how many were in his... Other two, there's 60-some, I think, in each of those, which gives them about 200 sites, along with the two parks to the east there, plus another one I hear that's coming down to the north of these parks. We're easily going to have 300 to 400 RV sites in a very small area. That's a huge concentration of septic over sandy loam soil, where we have an ag well that hit water at 15 feet. According to DNR, that's a high aquifer situation. That needs to have some special consideration about how much septic we are applying into the ground here. How much flow? Each of these campsites, according to DNR, is supposed to have 100 gallons of flow per day. You put that together, this is like having 130 houses, more than 130 houses over there. Almost the equivalent of four to six 2,400-head KFO barns in flow. It's according to what I've been able to research on things. So the question is, is when my well starts to have human feces contaminations in it, is Mr. Evans going to pay for the cost of the fact that I can no longer irrigate my hops according to federal standards? I mean, at this point, it threatens our ag operation as well. There's another consideration, too, because it's a huge concentration of campgrounds down there. The traffic is massive. We see children running up and down the roads on UTVs, hanging off of them, racing them. We see, we, this, yesterday, we were off for Memorial Day, our usual observance activities, and when we came home, we had empty alcoholic beverage bottles on our property. That's not the way anyone wants to come home to their place. When these things are crowded, it looks like it's a nice wide street, but you look up and down, as this weekend, one lane of traffic. We have 300 to 400 sites, or 200 sites in his. Have we really looked at the fire situation? What happens when there's a situation like coming up on this fourth? If fireworks are lit off and something starts? I mean, I could really address the emergency situations down there with such a heavy concentration of campers.
Mr. Heine, I gave you six minutes.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
You're good.
I'll wrap it, I'll just wrap it up there is that, you know, if this was, if this was KFOs, there, no one would be arguing with the, about, about this stuff. You know, there'd be a ton of people up here complaining about the lack of variances for buildings and no screening and trying to force residences to pay for roads. I mean, it's a double standard, and it just needs to be considered.
Thank you.
I have a question of Mr. Heine, actually. Now, with regard to campground number two, has the screening and things that were supposed to be put up according to that conditional use permit, are those up?
None, zero.
And you're saying in the picture that we have that's been provided, you're saying that the road isn't as wide as depicted in the picture?
It looks wide in the picture. But when you have cars parked on both sides, you have essentially a room for just one car passing down the middle. I mean, I see it just literally, I just see it because it's right there. I look out my window.
Well, I understand that, and I don't. That's why I'm asking questions.
Yeah, sorry.
So are you saying that when Mr. Evans, people come to camp or resort in campground number two, that they're not parking, for example, next to their campers? They're parking out into this road?
Yes, they park along the side of the roads.
Both sides?
Pretty, both sides of the roads, yes. It's pretty common. I mean, you see that all over the county, you know, parking along the side of the road, you know? And, you know, it's not a, it's not really a problem for me, but it would be a problem if there's an emergency situation.
Those were my questions.
All right, thank you. Before I let you rebut, and I will give you six minutes to respond to that, anyone else care to make a public comment? Oh, we've got two. Come on up. Go ahead and state your name, please.
My name's Don O'Hearn. I have a mobile RV repair business here in Yankton.
Don what?
O'Hearn, O-H-E-R-N.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I used to go branch out all over the place, my mobile RV repair business, but Yankton's getting so big with so many campers and stuff, I just stay here now. I don't go outside of Yankton anymore. And talking about the road situation, especially over this Memorial Weekend, when I went over to the Paramount RV, I've never, I've been in there several times. I don't have to stop for anybody. There's plenty of road room there. But Matt keeps all his parks up really nice. I like the garbage idea. Everything's got to be tied up and in a bag. Nothing can blow around. There's no trash going anywhere. It all works really well. He does a good job. And, sorry about my appearance, but I was still working when I came here. And I can still be working when I leave. I can work 12 hours a day, pretty easy. But the only person I see work harder than me is Matt. He's out there all the time, working on those roads, and he keeps it nice and clean. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Gentlemen back there, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Trevere. I've worked for Matt or with Matt, however you want to put it, for the last three years. I manage his Reichen's RV Park. I helped finish the Yankton RV Park, and I've also helped develop and build the Paramount. Reichen's RV Park is a very beautiful place. It's well-developed, it's well-maintained, it's kept up. The Yankton Park is the same way. It's mowed. It's still in the development stage. We add, we make improvements any chance we can with the input of our campers that are there. I, like I said, I just helped him finish up the premier, and we're still doing the final touches, but it's going to be developing to be a beautiful park, just like his other ones. In my opinion, those roads are plenty wide. May have looked a little tight when the campers first moved in, when we opened up the doors, but you can get cars going both directions. RVs going both directions. Plenty of room. And my opinion, to deny this young man of his dreams and his goals for the future is just, it's unheard of. I mean, he's a very hard worker. He takes a lot of pride in what he does. And I'm honored to work there. And I'm, I'm honored to work for him. He's a good man.
Sir, spell your last name for us, please.
Trevere, T-E-R-V-E-E-R.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else care to make a public comment at this time? All right. Ross, do you want to? I'll give you six minutes. You bet.
Bill, and this is a separate, totally separate conditional use permit from the other ones, correct? The, from this other campgrounds, yeah. And so I guess I not directed at anybody, but the, make sure that we're looking at this conditional use permit and not, you know, the other ones.
Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. The comments that were made about Doe Road, I'd like to remind the commission that a condition of putting in Paramount RV Park was that the road had to be built to county specifications.
That's number two?
What?
That campground number two?
For campground number two.
Okay.
It was required to be built to county specifications as a condition of the CUP. In order to do that properly, Mr. Evans asked for and obtained an engineering cross section from the county that was provided to him and that was used to construct the roadway. So it was built to county specs as engineered by the county. The road's surface is the full width required by ordinance. So there, there is nothing about that road that makes it narrower than any other county road. It, it meets specs, otherwise he wouldn't be able to open up his park. And we do have communication from the, the highway superintendent confirming that the road was good before anybody was allowed to move in. So I hope that puts that issue to rest. When I just asked the question of Mr. Evans, he confirmed for me, people do not park on Doe. He said, that's counterintuitive because people need to be moving campers in and out of there. That, that's not practical. And as it relates to fires and fireworks, I think I indicated to this board before that Mr. Evans has a very strict set of rules for his park that include things like civil fines. I made the comment, I'm not even sure you can legally do that. But he does that to keep his parks operating in a safe and clean and orderly manner. One of those rules is you cannot shoot off fireworks in this campground. So he tries to operate from a position of responsibility, tries to make sure that people play nice in the pool, basically. So I, I just want to make sure that that is not a red herring that this board runs with. The other thing I want to point out is in the campground two conditional use permit, he was given a year to install that fence. That fence will be installed within the timeframe that's required. He was up to the wire literally to get the, the campers in based on the contracts that had been pre-sold. So that fence is not in yet, but he's got time. He's not in violation of the CUPs by not having it there quite yet. I also wanted to spell the notion that he was not trying to work with the neighbors. As Mr. Heine indicated, there was a meeting that was held of the neighborhood property owners to try to reach a more comprehensive road maintenance agreement with Alphonse Road. All neighboring property owners are in agreement as to how that's going to work. It's being circulated for signatures. The only party that's refusing to participate is Mr. Heine. So they're, they're proceeding without him. So I, I don't want this to appear as though he's just a bull in a shop, in a china shop with the neighbors, that he can't get along and he's unwilling to do it right and responsibly.
I'd ask one question. Who was a county person that engineered the buck?
I don't know who engineered it, but the well, okay, so, right. I don't know the answer to that question. I think it was an outside contractor. But what I understand is Mr. Evans contacted the highway superintendent, Mr. Sedgwick. And he said, I need it. And he said, we'll get it from our engineer. So he got a cross section made and brought it to Matt. So who actually designed it? I can't tell you because we weren't involved in that line of communication, but he was given the design and followed it.
Well, don't run off.
I'll just stay up here until you dismiss me. How's that?
When you were talking about, I understood Mr. Heine to say that the road that people were parking on were the ones within the trailer court or RV park and not on Doe Road.
I was under the impression that he was complaining about the parking on Doe Road. But there's individual campsite parking, so each, each site has its own private parking spaces.
Next to the, to your camper?
That's right, yeah.
So they aren't to be parking in the road?
Yeah.
Mr. Evans can, he's probably been out there more times than you.
The sites in the previous plan, not this plan, are 60 feet long. The longest camper that you can get is about 42 feet. So there's still 20 feet in the front, in the actual pad to park. You can park on the road if you want. That is not denied. The road is 30 feet wide. The average width of a car is about seven feet. So 14 feet of that leaves still, you know, 14, 15 feet in the middle.
Do you let people park on what appears to be the grass next to the camper pad? So if I had an RV and, and Ms. Los decided to stop by, she can't park on the grass?
No golf carts are allowed, no cars are allowed. We are a very high end park. You will get a ticket immediately and you will have to pay for the grass. We are very strict.
Matt, this is still like a yearly lease type?
Six months.
Six months.
So April 15th to October 15th.
It's not like a daily, like if you go out to the state campground.
We, we strictly do not.
That's really busy out there because people are coming in every day where yours are every six months. So it's not like you're having 100 campers coming in there every single day.
Correct. So all the campers.
You can park all over the place because anybody who's been out there, you can park, as long as you have two wheels on the pavement, you can basically park anywhere.
Yes, and we do not, all of our people stay a year. At, they have the six month contract and then they have winter storage in the winter time. They just leave it there. Most of the people minimum is one year. I have a very low turnover rate. It's probably 10%. I'd say out of 200 campsites. So for the last five years, I have people from the beginning. They don't leave. I mean, my parks are very nice, very strict, very well kept and people love that. Other parks are kind of flexible. They let you park on the grass, the garbage overflows and they don't like that. So I just, like Jerry said, I get notifications from the campers and I fix the problems.
Just to clarify, there are no year leases. They're seasonal leases where the people renew and just leave their stuff there over the winter. So I don't want to give the impression as though it's a, a year to year lease. It's, it's a still a seasonal campground lease.
It's not, not daily, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's no daily rate.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one that I came to mind with it joining in the other campground. I don't have an issue with that. There's a bath house if I remember though. I assume this campground will be utilizing that bath house.
And, and the pool and the splash pad and all those amenities.
One thing I guess I would note is, or question is, if, if DENR has reviewed the additional use to the bath house?
Yeah, that also had to go through the DENR with the pool and the extra specifications for that bath house, as I understand it. So there were extra requirements.
Right.
Yeah, he's complied with.
Where are the pool and splash pad on your depiction?
You can't see that there because it would be where, somewhere in your desk.
It's on the south side of number two.
Yes, yeah, it's in number two.
All right. I think you may sit down now. Thank you. So I'll go close public comment. Technically, we were still in public comment. Bringing back to the commission for further discussion, let's walk through the findings of fact from the planning commission as Mr. Denherter had noted, all the notifications, the hearings were held, conditional use permit was approved 6-0, I believe. Ingress egress exists from Buck Street and Doe Avenue is how they outlined it. Also utilizing the private drive to the east side of this lot. Each lot will have parking, refuse service area will be present. Technically, that's going to be on a weekly service though, correct? So there won't be any central refuse area. But service will be there. Utilities are available. Fence will be erected along the east and the west ends of the property. Very similar to campground number two. I'm, I recall that same requirement. Signs will be requested through permit if needed. Yard requirements exist, campgrounds in the area to the south and east. And I think that was the end of their findings of fact. The only thing not covered that I did have a question on is drainage. As we add these campgrounds and these hard surfaces and we start leveling things out. I, if I recall correctly, this all had a drainage plan when these lots were created. If I'm remembering correctly. So I'm assuming your drainage is going northwest and is it going to the ditch on Buck Street? Et cetera. So if someone could walk me through drainage.
Okay, so the Christiansins who had this entire property before it was sold had to have a drainage plan, according to the subdivision ordinance, that was all done. This drainage for this particular lot drains to Buck and then from Buck to Deer Boulevard and then down. So Mike, that was another thing that Mike had to do was make sure that the ditches had enough drop to make the drainage. Pat also did that on my first park to make sure that, I don't remember what it was, a tenth per however far to make sure it'll drain properly. So Mike did that also when he came out to make sure it would drain.
So there's a culvert under that private easement that accesses Buck?
Okay, the pri, okay, so there's.
On the east side.
Yep, so. Oh, okay. Okay, so.
So there, that 46 foot private road easement has a culvert under it at Buck Street. So what, excuse me, water can drain to Deer.
Yep, so I believe subdivision ordinance actually requires 12 inch. We did, Mike had me do 18 inch on here, just as overkill, 18 inch here as far as overkill. Then on my entries here, I'm all required steel culverts here. I did those. This does not have a road on this side. The private road starts here. When this goes in, there will also be required subdivision ordinance culverts here and here on each side. So that'll also meet county spec as far as drainage. The water flows here and then Buck, this is the high point. This is the low point. So it all drains to this ditch and then down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Another issue, it's kind of a side issue a little bit. So in 2019, when we had the flood down there. I did replace this culvert down here on Alphonse Road with, I believe it's a 24 inch culvert down there to clean this out to make sure that that drains properly. And I cleaned out all the culverts all the way down to the river. So it would drain properly down that way. And once I did that, I got a call from Aaron here and his basement was completely flooded. And we had at least a foot of water and he noticed it right away after I did that. So it, I'm positive it drains properly over there after I cleaned out all those culverts, as long as everybody kept up with the maintenance in the last couple of years.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, discussion on the application?
Move approval of the conditional use permit.
Before anyone seconds, since there was a question on completion timeline for that last fence, I do believe we need a completion timeline for this fence. Yes, sir?
Sorry, that's one thing that didn't get mentioned. So I kind of ran a little short on money. After all this, somebody was making an offer on this property and I had the option. If I didn't exercise my option, I would have lost the property. I don't plan on developing on this anytime soon on here. If we can somehow make like from start of construction, like one year after or something like that. If we can do that, I'd really appreciate it. I know on other parks, they've been given three years and stuff like that. I just, I don't know when I'm going to start. It could be next year. It could be the year after, so.
So did you buy a parcel north of that for potentially number four?
No, I didn't. I lost out on that one. Somebody else is building one on lot 11, which was in your plots today. It's actually one of my RV park people who I rent to, they're building their own RV park now. So I won't be seeing them again.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So with that being said, I think before we approve your, or a second year motion, Dan, we need to get that in writing somewhere.
Sure, I'll amend my motion to state the fence needs to be completed one year after construction starts.
Within one year?
Within one year, yeah.
Year after construction. Are there any other, you know, before we move down the path of a full, full motion, any other concerns we need to make sure are in writing?
Let me ask this question. Are we going to use the same definition for startup construction? For this as we do for egg projects?
I think that when it, when that goes in, that'll, that takes effect on every building in the I don't think that's specific to the egg district.
That's a state law. This is a state law definition now of what construction is.
The one that we're talking about adding. Yeah, yeah. That would have, my assumption is that applies across the board, not just to egg district.
The, the other way you could say it is, once you start housing the facility, because technically it's concrete, you don't need a building permit for concrete.
Right.
So we could say, once you start having campers, you've got one year to get a fence in. Does that seem, is that more realistic, Don, for you?
I just want to create a double standard.
Yep.
All right, I'm in my motion to state the fence needs to be completed one year after campers start to populate.
Population.
Start to occupy the.
Do we know when that was? When your first camper?
No, this is, he's not developing.
You haven't built it yet?
Number three, no.
Okay.
Any other additions that need to be added to the findings of fact here? So we have a motion on the table to approve the conditional use permit with the addition of a fence being in place one year after occupation begins.
Second.
No, I want to, oh, second, go ahead. Sorry. I'll go to, I want to end the discussion part.
Okay, discussion.
Okay. I, I think this is another example, very similar to what Dan brought up in the beginning. This is in the ordinance, the, we have to follow the ordinance and we do have, we have nothing in our ordinance that prohibits these folks from doing this because some people think there's too many RV parks down there. So, you know, I'm, I'm in support of, of the project for that reason alone. If we don't want RV parks there, we better change our ordinance.
I'd agree. And I think just for further. I'd agree, and I think just for further, the, the septic in that area is, is grow, a growing concern. But that's not this board's jurisdiction, I guess, that's DE and R. And, and maybe we need to have a, a meeting with them to help plan a, for the future and, and help us focus that ordinance. But that's for another day, I guess.
I've spoke with DE and R dozens of times about that and they said, well, particularly with Riverside Acres and they. Until there's a problem, they're not gonna do anything about it, so they're aware of it.
And D A N R, now, correct?
July first, July first.
No, no, it's a dead deal, yeah, yeah, that wasn't technically a law.
D A N.
All right, discussion's complete, roll call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. CUP has been approved with the condition stated. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session, go back into regular session.
Board of adjustment.
I would make a motion to come out of.
What did I say?
Board of adjustments and go into regular session.
What did I say?
You said executive session.
Executive session.
Oh, well, I guess we'll get there eventually, thank you, tells you how tired I am this evening. So I have a motion by Fox and a second by Clemish. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay, motion carries, we are now sitting as regular session, item twelve and thirteen are completed. And we're at fourteen, a little behind schedule, but not too bad. Yep, go ahead, sorry, Crystal, I'm writing the time down here.
Hi, Crystal.
I just brought you.
Yes.
All right. Hi. That's just what we have going on in June. So I just wanted to give you guys an update, so I'm just here for a couple of minutes and then answer any questions. And, and just to kind of let you know where we are at the Mead Cultural Education Center. So the American Association of Museums has reported that fifteen percent of museums. Will close permanently due to financial struggles from COVID nineteen. The Mead Cultural Education Center staff is working diligently and very hard to ensure that our facility is not one of them. The sustainability of a museum post-COVID depends on its ability to be a long-term asset to their community. Museums who adapt to address cultural divides in their community play a vital role to the future. The Mead Cultural Education Center is one of those museums looking to our community to see where we can help connecting cultures. The Indian County Historical Society, which owns and operates the Mead Cultural Education Center. Has adopted and updated our mission statement. To provide an authentic historical experience of the Yankton area from pre-Dakota territory to modern day. We also created our very first vision statement, which was very exciting for us, you know, being as old as we are. And our new vision is to strive to enhance the quality of life through cultural understanding. So this means we are no longer just a warehouse of history. But a collection of over forty-five thousand historic artifacts that the Yankton community and surrounding communities. Disposal, it's at their disposal to address the economic and social issues of modern times. Through the education of what was and providing a place where the ideas that what can be can thrive. The Indian County Historical Society Board of Directors, Staff, Volunteers. Have taken our first steps in our direction of our new mission and our vision. And we had a mandatory one-day. Cultural growth and understanding training, we brought in Faith Spotted Eagle from the Yankton Sioux Nation. And this is the first step, we did this in early May, it was really exciting for us, it was something we'd been wanting to do for a really long time. And this is the beginning of a long-term partnership that we're planning to do with the Yankton Nation. So that we can design an exhibit to tell our collective history. And this is a five thousand square foot exhibit that we hope to open by twenty twenty-three. Funding determines that, of course, but. And it's just one example of partnerships that we are doing and outreach programs and projects that are underway. To expand what it is that we do and how we can help our community. I wanted to add that the Indian County Historical Society has very much appreciated the support of this county commission. We continue to find resources and ways to try to stretch the funding that you guys do give us through grant writing and private donations and other things. We're definitely not out of the woods yet with this post-COVID. We are an indoor tourism facility. Last year, we tried to give, we made four thousand free passes to give to each campsite. At the lake and we saw twenty come back, like, we could not give away an indoor experience last year, it just wasn't happening. So our be, our being able to survive this year, I know that if we survive this year, we will survive. But it really depends on how quickly that indoor tourism experience and industry recovers. You know, we're already starting to see a few people, but we do have to see like at least ten to twenty people a day to make sure that we're gonna be all right. So as you know, we do still receive, of course, the mill levy funds and I just wanted to let you know, remind you that we use that for repaying our USDA loan for our bathrooms and our elevator. And we also pay for a full-time maintenance position to maintain the building and to do ongoing work. And then the rest is for restoration projects and utilities. The Mead employs three full-time staff and three part-time staff and thanks to the PPP program federally, we were able to keep everyone at the museum. Which was huge for us. All of these individuals, they're amazing and, and very talented people. And they do the job of three people each, so they're just amazing, they, they, they've learned what they need to learn, no matter what. So they have a real passion, though, for the work that they do and the Yankton County community should be proud of them. We hope that the Yankton County Commission will continue to fund us in addition to the mill levy until we can recover from COVID. It really does help us out tremendously. We have a bright future and we were working very hard to make sure that Mead Cultural Education Center is something that is a destination museum. And something that our community can utilize on a regular basis and we're proud of. Any questions about what we do?
Are you gonna, are you going to have the Halloween?
I knew you were gonna ask me.
Overnight again?
Yes, we're gonna have the night at Mead and we'll have the haunted history tours again.
I'm sorry?
We'll have night at Mead and we'll have the haunted history tours again, that was very popular for us and fundraisers are important, so.
Are you having a chance to get fundraising scheduled for the summer or any outdoor activities or?
We're not gonna do any outdoor activities, we did do, just finish up our Heritage Park raffle. And our goal was to raise seventeen thousand dollars between raffle tickets and private donations, like one-time gifts or pledges. And we raised nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, I'm so excited. So we're gonna start doing, so we have the money now to do the dirt work and the foundation for the depot, the biggest building that we have to move from West Side Park out. And so whenever the contractors show up, they'll be getting going on that project and then they'll move the depot late July, early August. And then our overall goal for being able to move everything out to the new park is a hundred thousand. And we're now only twenty-five thousand dollars away from that goal, so we're so close, so close. And so we're gonna work on trying to find ways to secure that sooner than later so that we can get that project going. And add another benefit to having livery, because then we wanna offer living history programs every summer. We'll do that with the facility outside, so.
All right, thanks for dropping by.
Yeah, thanks, you guys, have a good night.
Item number fifteen, we have a couple of handbook things that need to be amended. The first one is to strike the month notation from section seven oh two to B. It's causing a little bit of. Confusion, if you will, so the proposal is to simply. In there, take out the parentheses that says seventy-two months, hundred and sixty-eight, when, et cetera, all the way down through both those tables. And that just makes it clear that that, that was not changed, it's essentially the same that we've done for many years.
I would move to amend the handbook to so reflect.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Kettering, to strike the month notation from section seven oh two to B tables, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay, motion carries. And then the second is the domestic partnership. Think. And what's in your packet is the old handbook and I know I found it in here, whoop, wrong manual.
I have a question, is it really a domestic partnership now that we allow people to get married?
I don't, I don't know exactly the legalities, but I know, like, what's in the packet, that's what the current, I shouldn't say current, the previous. Handbook says.
Sounds like a legal question.
Carried, it didn't get carried through to the new.
And it had to do with the health insurance plan.
Twenty nineteen.
Right, and they did not get married?
No, it's just, they just lived together, they have not ever gotten married.
So the new sex.
How was that different from anybody else who chooses not to get married? So I could randomly pick some person and they could get health insurance at the county rate?
Well, as long as one of the spouses are, work for the county.
Well, one of the other people.
Well, and they need to, it comes out of their pocket.
Yeah, but it's better than, better than buying insurance on your own, no. It would be less expensive than on my own.
And you've got exposure.
There, yeah, there is.
If that person has horrendous hospital bills.
Right. There is some, and I don't know, to be honest, what the defin, how, how.
That is a good question.
Insurance company defines a domestic partnership.
Well, I would suspect they define it narrowly.
Somebody off the street and say you wanna.
Yeah.
Since we moved to Avera, Avera, we have to have this. They needed sign that we made a motion to approve this.
We needed it, we did it last year or the year before with Wellmark two.
Yeah, we put it in in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, cuz I sense, you know, we stayed with Blue Cross, we didn't have to do, but since we went to Avera, they need it also.
Does Avera have a definition of a domestic partnership and is it different than what ours is?
I don't know.
I know.
I guess we never.
All I know is, is Julie Outk had had us amend this in twenty nineteen. And so we didn't have to do it in twenty twenty because it was in our old handbook, but then we revised our handbook and somehow it didn't get carried forward. So the insurance company is again asking us to update it and it's section seven thirteen, health insurance in our new manual. And it would be the second sentence, employees who want to provide health insurance coverage for family members. What we're asking to do is to include a domestic partnership will be responsible for the additional premium cost.
Okay, who decides it's a domestic partnership, us or Avera? Because I can foresee this becoming a problem if we do it.
I don't believe we do, I, it's either the Avera or the state. Since, cuz we don't have common law marriage here, correct?
No, but we can have. Two people of the same sex getting married.
Right.
But we don't have common law marriage here, so why would we do something that would seemingly indicate that we approve of common law marriage?
I think that's what the mess, the reason for domestic partnerships, so you have the.
I think it sets a bad precedent.
If you want, I can see if Julie has something, why we have to do it.
I, I'm guessing she does because insurance plans can determine who's eligible. And so then they typically have it set up for what qualifies as a domestic partnership. And so if the insurance company has that, then you need to allow for it under your plan. Typically, like, there's all sorts of definitions, but it's usually, they have to have lived together for a certain period of time. If they have children, that's one of them, if they're financially responsible, so my guess is Avera. Has that option in their plan, so they're asking the county. To make sure that their handbook.
Nineteen, it was the insurance company asking us to add that provision there.
Right.
Okay, as long as it's somebody else making that determination and it doesn't blow back on the county, I don't care.
Yeah, it's not. So if anyone would care to make a motion, otherwise. We can seek to get more information, but this was in our old handbook, it just got overlooked.
I'd move to add the BURBRA's domestic partnership and, in. Our employee handbook for health insurance.
Could we have it as determined by the insurance?
Can we add what?
Add maybe as determined by the insurance carrier or something, cuz I'm with Wanda, I don't like the idea of us deciding, well, we're gonna give you insurance, but you don't qualify and I.
Well, we don't pay for the insurance anyway, the insurance companies do.
It's all on the employee to sign up for the, the extra coverage.
Yeah, I don't, we determine who, what a domestic.
We have nothing to do with it.
Just say, sure.
So I have a motion on the table to add the words domestic partnership in section seven thirteen, do I have a second? Well, it doesn't look like we have a second. So at this point, what do you guys wanna do?
I would suggest that Julie come to the next meeting and tell us the answer to these questions and I guess I would then feel more comfortable.
I will work with Julie to get a, more specific information on this and we will put it on the June fifteenth agenda. All right, item fifteen is closed for now. It's five zero, we are at item sixteen, approved J D A I grant application. So this was emailed to Patty and myself at the end of May and they were asking us to sign it. But we felt it was wise for the full commission to actually approve it before we signed, I believe it's due June fourth. Are there any questions? There's a lot of responsibility in our, on our state's attorney's office and some on our sheriff as well. And they are asking for, I think, the full. Seventy, seventy thousand or so and that, all of that funding goes to the Boys and Girls Club.
I thought it was fifty. Wasn't it fifty before?
Well, it depends on what, it's fifty-seven thousand for personnel and then they have contracted services, they have travel, equipment, and then they have operating expenses. And I'm assuming the operating expenses are where ankle bracelets and other things are supposed to come. I did not get asked for input on the application and, and I don't think our state's attorney's office did either. So this is what they are planning to submit. And I think at the end, my signature, Patty and.
Rob.
Yeah, see, they've got forty-two thousand for salary, executive director salary, ten thousand and change, liabilities, five thousand.
But paid you, Angel.
So does that additional ten thousand go to the current director? Am I reading that wrong?
I would assume full F T E executive director salary and. I would assume full F T E executive director salary and point oh five, I'm assuming that, yeah, that's probably point oh five F T E C E O salary.
I think they're actually missing a point in front of that zero. It should be point oh seven five and point oh five. I think they're missing that.
So they got fifty seven and change for personnel, four hundred for contracted services, forty two hundred for travel, a thousand for equipment, seven thousand for operating costs, totaling seventy thousand thirty dollars. Which is thirty dollars over the maximum, but.
Have they picked their diversion coordinator yet?
No.
No, no, you need, we need approval of the grant before they'll do that. I think mid-June, they were supposed to get approval and then July, they were looking at opening up applications, if I remember correctly.
So this, this project budget and application wasn't really discussed with the team that was investigating the J D A I initially.
It's always been seventy thousand dollar grant is.
Yeah, thi- this document was sent after our last meeting of the full J D A I group. And like I said, I got it for signature.
And the deadline is the fourth, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean.
So on this, um, does this have to, budget for this, the county?
No, we get no dollars. The, we will have additional cost on our end in our state's attorney's office, but we get no dollars from this for those.
So this is just a grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be a three-year grant application.
Any idea what additional costs are going to be in the state's attorney's office?
A lot.
Well, that narrows it down.
We're looking at, at some attorney time, significant attorney time. So we'll have to accomplish that during our following meetings in our budget for sure.
If anybody is interested on Friday, I believe Don and I are going, there's a trip to Brookings County to look at how they implement their J D I program. And we are meeting with their, some of the some of the judges and their state's attorney's office and their Boys and Girls Club. And they've had it, how long have they had? Is it a couple of years?
One year.
So, Deb, are you going to that as well or?
Becky and I are.
Okay, and then I think Don and I might go. Anybody else wants to go?
If, if more than three, you have to let me know so I can advertise.
Then I will not be going. I found out a different.
Okay, okay.
You found out a what?
I'm going to Mexico.
New or old?
Don, I'll trade you. But if anybody wants to go, it, it should be a really good look at an established juvenile detention aversion initiative in the state.
So tonight, we are being asked to review this application and give our approval so signatures can be given and then the application submitted.
This application was completed by the Boys and Girls Club and. Okay.
There, there was one notation of Brookings County in there that I sent them to correct already. So I'll make sure that that dot gets the, in front of the point oh seven five.
So the Boys and Girls Club created all twenty-one pages of this?
Yes, I think they based, I think they based it off their Brookings application.
I think they just took their Brookings application.
Okay. Waiting for a motion?
Yep, motion or further questions?
I'll move we approve the grant application for the J D I A I grant.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the J D A I grant application that's presented to us tonight. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Next item is a resolution. Number seventeen. Approve off-sale package liquor license resolution and renewal amount.
I would move to approve resolution twenty-one dash five.
Well, hang, hang on a second because one of them has a sheriff requirement and one of them does not. So there's two in the packet. Now, our other liquor licenses, we don't have the sheriff involved at all.
Correct. So originally, the county that had already gone through this has their sheriff do it. So we put it in there. I had conversations with Patty and Karen and Karen explained how she normally does it, where she just directly contacts the sheriff's office. I did email Sheriff Lahacus, but he didn't respond. So the recommendation from the auditor and from our office would then be to go with the second version without the sheriff's form. So that's why I had Valley put both of them in the packet.
Let me clarify my motion, that I move that we approve resolution twenty-one dash five, that only includes three subparts. One, two, A, two, B, and three, and not four subparts. Which is the second in the packet.
So I have a motion on the table.
Second.
And a second. So motion by Fox, second by Healy. And I am just going to, I'm not going to read the whole resolution. I'm going to read number one, two, and three. So applicants may apply for the package off-sale liquor license beginning upon passage of twenty twenty-one Senate Bill one fifty-two. Such application package shall include the following. Uniform alcoholic beverage application must be completed fully and according to its instructions and bear the necessary original signatures. License purchase fee, license purchase fee in the amount of one thousand dollars shall be presented at time of application. In the event the first come, first served applicant is not able to meet the licensee's standards set out by S D C L chapter thirty-five two, the applicant who next submits a fully and accurately completed application shall be next considered. And the renewals on these are five hundred, correct?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, does that need to be in here?
It doesn't. That's set by statute. So we don't have a choice. We also did add, it is a first come, first served basis beginning June fifteenth. Anything postmarked or brought to the auditor's office before that will be declined. So it's first come, first served, but as of June fifteenth.
All right, and you'd have to be three miles from the exterior boundary of a, an municipality. I think we've got someone unmuted. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion on the resolution twenty-one five.
Regular fees for liquor license, are, are they a thousand or weren't they fifteen hundred? I, I guess I thought we had discussed fifteen hundred as the initial one.
No, I think that's the marijuana one.
I thought we, no, I thought we set the marijuana one the same as the liquor, the on-off sale one. I, from what I recall, could be wrong, we discussed fifteen hundred. I'm fine if we want to lower it because this is package off-sale liquor. So it's not like a bar facility, but.
Fifteen hundred is, is on sale.
Okay. Did we want to have it the same? Or do we want to have this? It'd be nice if marijuana on sale liquor was one and then off-sale liquor was the same if they were all uniform, because this is going to be a different price.
Where are we getting marijuana?
When we, when Wanda and I discussed what the fee was going to be for a license requirement.
An initial or a renewal?
Initial.
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 Okay, I, I don't remember discussing the fifteen hundred.
I, I remember at the last meeting, you decided on a thousand, which is why we prepared it as a thousand.
I, I guess I, I had recalled we were in, and I could be wrong here, that we were going to go with the same as the on-sale. But if we want to go a thousand, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? We'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes, motion passes five zero, resolution is approved. We are at public comments. Anyone care to make a public comment? All right, no public comments. We'll close public comment. Commissioner updates. Anyone have something to share?
I spoke with Mr. Vedder about the rural transitional rezone and we are in agreeance that we felt it would be beneficial if we allowed people who are zoned R T to rezone to another zone so they could utilize their property. Our thought was that we would provide that service free of charge, maybe for a month or two or three, to get some of those areas in where they can actually be developed. Is there support for the, from the commission for doing something like that? We can get a proposal if that's if you guys think that would work. From what I've heard, talking to planning commissioners that were in the initial zoning ordinance, rural transitional zoned areas, the intent was that they never stayed that way, that people would come in and rezone to the actual use of the property. That hasn't happened. And so we run into places like where we're doing variances for rural transitional, which we've done a couple of those.
And we want to do that for free, why?
Well, because I think it's incentivizing people to do that. It is, you know, four hundred and fifty dollars for rezone. We've had some rezones denied recently. And from what I'm gauging, talking, well, one still is denied. From what I have discussed with individuals, it's, you know, I think that would be an opportunity to get some of those areas zoned to what their actual current use is. And if we get them all together, I, I think it would be a, you know, not as much work as if we do small parcels.
You know, my, my thought on that is I think something does need to be done. I think it's R T right now for two reasons. One was to see what it develops into, but then two, it was kind of no man's land and it didn't fit our current zoning. And I think we, I, I think we're still going to have problems with it fitting into our current, so nobody's going to go commercial because the lot size and setbacks are, don't, don't work for, unless you're a huge manufacturing plant. So I think we are commercials, we need to like commercial or something. We might need to look at like a mini ag district or something. Because I, I just think some of that R T isn't going to fit ag. People aren't going to want to move to that, but they don't want to become R one, two, or three.
Yeah, well, and, and it's not going to be, we're not going to, I guess I thought was, you know, I agree with you a hundred percent, Joe, we don't want to force anybody to rezone. But there are areas particularly by, by the river and, and south near the city that, you know, are, are prime locations for rezones. And we, we actually did that one with Brad King. Instead of rezoning, he came in and got a variance for R T. And, and really, I think a better, better for planning, better for zoning and development is to get those rezoned. And, and that's kind of what Mr. Vedder supported. Now, if you look up there, blue is rural transitional. And now if you look on the west of Yankton, all of that, to develop that, minimum twenty acres. And does it make sense to have all of that twenty acres, but then just to the left of it is, is, in the pink is, what is that, one acre? One acre in, in that V section, that's one acre. Yellow is five acres. I don't know. It, it's, is it, is it going to solve all our problems? No, but there's a chance, and we won't know unless we try, that we could get some of that rezoned into usable lots. And, and if we don't try, we won't know if it works, so.
I guess my, well, maybe this needs to be an agenda item. My, my thought is, I, I agree, something just needs to be done. I, my thought is with comprehensive plan and discussions at planning and zoning, maybe we need to, we need to shape and plan the county, I mean, that's what planning and zoning does. My, my concern with if we send out letters to every parcel owner in an R T and say, you've got a one-time chance for a pre-rezone, it's going to be speckled with it.
Yeah, and, and Gary and I can, can discuss, if there's support for it, we can discuss it further and, and prioritize certain areas to start with. We can see through that, but I don't want to, you know, put a whole bunch of work into it if, if there's not support on this.
I would have, I would support something like that. I just, I just don't want to see, this guy wants commercial, this guy wants egg, and this guy wants R one.
No, I understand. Okay.
So we have to be a little focused on what we do with it.
Sure.
And so here comes shortly, we're going to be going over our comprehensive plan. And this goes in with it. And I do see what Joe's saying is the POC mark, spot zoning, if you will. And then I fear if we have a month or two free and then at the end of those, someone says, well, I missed it, I didn't know, and I want it free, and that drags on for six months and things. So I think when you have this discussion, it needs to be a very public discussion and some meetings, et cetera. And the planning commission is a good place to start having that when we do walk through that comprehensive plan change. And maybe it is a mini ag and it's a ten acre or, or something in, in those areas.
What I always saw is almost simple, the simplest to me is to just keep it essentially R T, but include everything you can do for the, combine what you would do in like a mini ag and like commercial and the residential all into one hodgepodge zone.
What's the difference between that and spot zoning? And, and I, I get what you're saying. I, I, I understand. But zoning is to have certain types of things in certain areas. R T, if you allow everything in R T, then it's not residential, it's not commercial, it's, it's whatever.
Don't you have to get either a building permit or a C U P in any event?
Well, rural transitional, as it's written out, there are very, very few things that you're even allowed to do. If, you know, it's article twelve in there. The, the permitted uses are agriculture, historic sites and utility, horticulture and utility facilities. A residential house isn't even a permitted use if it's a conditional use. So right now, we're in a huge housing shortage. Ask anybody out there, we're literally running out of lots, talking with the real estate agents. You know, now is the time to do something if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it. So. I guess, you, you know.
Well, I think we start those discussions with planning and zoning maybe, or I don't know, wherever, but.
Okay.
But you need to do something. Okay.
I'll, I guess I'll talk with Gary and see if he can, has a, have a proposal to, to do something like that.
Sort of an idea and way to start with.
Okay.
Or perhaps put it on an agenda so that people can come and talk about it if they want to.
Sure. Well, I, I wanted to have a proposal. I didn't want to spend a lot of time on it.
Well, I know, but sometimes nobody shows up.
Sure.
Sometimes people who are interested show up.
I will put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Any other updates?
Department had meeting tomorrow.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Yep. Okay. All right, well, with that, we are at item number twenty. Executive session for litigation pursuant to S D C L one twenty-five two, subpart three, for poor relief issues pursuant to S D C L one twenty-five two, twenty-eight thirteen, twenty-eight thirteen, one point three, and personnel issue pursuant to S D C L one twenty-five two, subpart one. Entertained a motion to go into. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for these.
I would move to go into executive session for each of those three issues.
Second.
I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now sitting at executive session.
I make a motion, we go back into regular session.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now sitting in regular session. No action will be taken as a result of litigation, poor relief, or personnel issue. Items for next meeting.
Dan's item about rural transitional housing.
Yeah, I'll work with, I'll work with Gary and see if we can get something by then.
Oh, and the domestic partner. Yep. All right, we have to have a, don't we have to have a reading on the marijuana?
That's got to be heard next Tuesday at planning first, so then we will hear it in July. Two meetings in July. Oh, and we will hear drainage ordinance, two meetings in July as well.
And when does Article 15 come back to us?
Article five will be our first July meeting. Yep.
I guess what the, when is the drainage ordinance changes coming forward?
July sixth and twenty.
Before we vote on that or at the same time, I would like to, as a commission, vote on whether or not we retain the zoning ordinance.
Do what?
Not the zoning, the drainage ordinance, because I would like a vote on that at some, some point. Because at this point, I'm not even sure that what we're, what we're accomplishing with the drainage ordinance.
I don't know if this is an update, but I talked to Jean Hunhoff the other day and she said that legislature is not making any rules relative to marijuana until after the state comes out with theirs. And so that there's no going, there's going to be no sale of any marijuana until after November one, in her opinion.
Well, we have to have the, you have to have the second reading of the temporary ordinance. But I did meet with Ross Denherter about what they're doing. So he and I are going to just keep communicating.
Okay.
He gave me what they're, they had a first reading. The city had a first reading of their marijuana ordinance.
And it's detailed.
And it's, it's what we proposed as an actual ordinance. They're going ordinance instead of temporary.
And then, but they're going to have to change their ordinance. Because there's. Yeah, yeah, so what's the point?
Okay.
Other than getting fifteen hundred dollars in non-refundable applications.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries.